Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is July 17, 2025. Appreciate everyone who's here in attendance, as well as those that are with us online. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have a presentation of results of the FY 2024 Financial Audit. Bateson Carter, Amanda Wilkinson. Amanda.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for letting me come and speak to you. I'm here to give you an overview of the results of the audit for the year ended 12/31/2024. And so I'm just going to give a summary overview of the audit and its results. So to begin with, what is included in the audit? The auditor's report is the very first report that's included in our financials. And it's going to lay out what is the county's responsibility and what's our responsibility as the auditors. The opinion that's been released with the audit is an unmodified opinion, which is what's also known as a clean audit report. This is the highest level of an opinion that you can get in the course of an audit. And it means that the financial statements are presented fairly and accountants with accepted accounting principles. The financial report that's been put together by the county is an annual comprehensive financial report. And this is in excess of what's required by the state as the annual reporting requirements. It includes additional information from the county that is useful for its financial statement users, including information that comes from management about the economic situation of the county, and additional statistical information. So it's additional required more than what's required by the state. And there's a lot of time and effort that goes into creating these accumulated comprehensive financial reports. The state of Georgia, out of all of the governmental entities that could put in for their financial reporting, the Certificate of Excellence is only awarded to around 100 to 150 entities across the state of Georgia every year. And that includes cities, counties, school districts, municipalities. And so it really is a testament to the county's extra work that's going into these financial statements. In 2024, the county has applied to receive another Certificate of Excellence for the financial statements that you have in front of you. And that will be the 18th consecutive year that the county has applied for this. When looking at the financial statements and what they include, this is an overview of all of the pieces that go into the county. The governmental activities include the funds that are reporting the general activity of the county, the SPOLOST funds that are being collected from the SPOLOST tax. There's a fund that is recording the activity from the American Rescue Plan Act. And then there's other non-major funds that are also included. Business-type activities include the Solid Waste Fund. And then there are additional component units that are presented outside the primary government that are also incorporated with the county's financial statements, which include the Health Department, the Development Authority, and the Industrial Development Authority. So what I'd like to do is just go over some of the high points for the major funds in the financial statements compared to what we had seen in the previous year. In 2024, overall general fund revenues increased by about $768,000, or 2% over what had been reported in fiscal year 2023. The property taxes that were collected in 2024 are consistent with what had been collected in the previous year. So the revenues are consistent, even though the county had approved a rollback of the millage rate. Licenses and permits also increased by about 35%, and that's mainly due to an increase in building permits due to development across the county. Investment income also increased in 2024 by about $225,000. And this is due to the county taking advantage of the favorable interest rates for the cash that it has on hand. When looking at the expenditures, so what the general fund spent in 2024, the expenditures increased by a little over $5 million, or 15%. When looking at how those expenditures were allocated across what types of costs there are, when looking just at wages and benefits across all of the departments, that accounted for a little over $3 million of the increase. This was a planned increase that incorporated the cost of living increases and also a planned merit and longevity increases to longstanding employees of the county. There were also budgeted increases across all departments from what the spending levels had been in 2023. And transfers out to other funds increased by $879,000. This is mainly the use of the general fund, using the money that had collected in previous years to be able to fund the Capital Projects Fund for future capital projects that the county has planned. When looking at the revenues to the budget for 2024, overall, the revenues came in a little bit more than $3 million over the expected revenues. This is mostly in the TAVT revenues that were more than the county had anticipated due to conservative budgeting. And when looking at expenditures, expenditures were less than the final approved budget by just around $3.7 million, mainly related to the fact that salaries and benefits across all wages were still less than the anticipated budgets. As long as the American Rescue Plan Act is still continuing to fund money, that is also being used to pay for some of the premium pay and wages for certain employees as well. To look at the trend of revenues to expenditures over the last five years, the blue line on this graph represents the revenues, and the expenditures is the orange line underneath it. So what this shows is over the last five years, in the general fund, the county has consistently spent less than has been, has collected in general fund revenue. One of the ratios that you can use to evaluate the health of the general fund is to look at how much of the fund balance is unassigned at fiscal year end compared to what the county is using for a normal expenditure operation for the next, or for the previous fiscal year. So when you're looking at this ratio, it gives an idea of how much the county has in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year that is available for use for operations for the next year. A rule of thumb is that this ratio should always be between at least 15% to 25%, which would indicate that you could cash flow or be able to fund 15% to 25% of your following fiscal year, which would be two to three months. The county has a calculated ratio of unassigned fund balance at the end of fiscal year '24 of just under 49%, which means that the reserves that are unassigned in the general fund at the end of the year could potentially fund up to half a year, six months of operations that is available for the next year or other projects that the county has intended. When looking at the debt that the county holds in governmental activities, exclusively is a contracts payable related to the Etowah Water and Sewer Authority expansion. The interest on this debt is 2.96%, and it will mature in 2027. And so to briefly move on from the general fund into some of the other major funds that the county reports, the American Rescue Plan Act is funded by revenues that came in from the federal award for the ARPA funding. It was created in 2021 to specifically track these funds and how they are being used. In 2024, $1.3 million was spent from this fund to pay for premium pay for eligible employees. Again, these are costs that the general fund normally would be paying, and the ARPA funding is covering it for the last few years. At the end of 2024, the remaining amount that was to be used in 2025 is $91,000. The SPOLOST fund showed collections of just over $19 million, which was an increase of 32% from what had been collected in 2023. T-SPOLOST collections for transportation projects began in 2024. The 2024 expenditures were just over $8 million and included various county projects and $1.4 million of allocations to the city of Dawsonville. At the end of the year, the cash balance that remained in the SPOLOST fund for use for the approved projects was just under $29 million. And then moving into the business-type funds, the Solid Waste Fund had an operating income of $168,000, which was an increase from 2023. This fund is continuing to show growth in the collections and landfill fees. And the operating income includes non-cash depreciation costs of about $84,000, which means that this fund is able to pay for the cost of its aging infrastructure. The operating income does not include transfers that came into this fund from the SPOLOST fund of just over $200,000 of projects that were paid for, unapproved SPOLOST projects. This fund also includes a post-closure cost liability of $894,000. The landfill post-closure period closes in 2032. So this liability is in its final decade of years as it's rolling down the period of time that it needs to be recorded on the books. So that was a high-level overview of the fiscal year '24 audit. Do you have any questions that I could answer for you?
Questions for Amanda? Very positive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank Natalie and all of the team at the Finance Department for all the work that's gone into this audit. It's definitely a process for everybody, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Natalie, and your staff as well. All right. So before we move on, I need to add one item to our work session. It'll be 8A. And that's going to be "Presentation of Purchasing Policy Waiver and Budget Request Concerning Repair of Kelly Bridge Road." So Robert's going to tell us about that. We've got an issue. So we're going to add that to the agenda today. And that'll be 8A. All right. So we'll move on to "Presentation of Propose Eagle Scout Project Through County Park System." Park and Recreation Director Matt Payne. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always a pleasure to talk to you and the commissioners as well. Thank you for having me. There's about 1,000 reasons why my job is pretty awesome, and this is definitely one of them, is when I get to come and to present to you a young Dawson County citizen who is working on an Eagle Scout project. And as you know, that doesn't just happen. Eagle Scouts is the top of the top. They really work hard at their stuff. I'm going to present to you Justin Clark, who is here with his grandfather, Mr. Jim Henderson. He's going to present to you his idea for his Eagle Scout project. He knows that you will be voting on this in two weeks. But in lieu of that, if we can have a picture made today, that would be awesome to have on his application. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Justin, and he's going to tell you what we got in mind.
Hello. My name is Justin Clark. I am from Troop 109. I would like to say thank you all for letting me be up here. My plan is to create six bat houses to put on Rock Creek Park trees. Bats are a natural and safe mosquito control. A single bat eats up to 1,000-plus mosquitoes per hour, helping reduce diseases like the West Nile virus. Bats consume 70% of their body weight and pests nightly, according to UGA. Bat houses are safe and maintenance-free. Once we put them up there, they will be up there, and then nature will do the rest. Another reason why this is good is that it will be helping endangered bat species, such as the northern long-eared bats, which are endangered, and big brown bats, which populations have been declining due to habitat loss, such as trees and caves. Proven success nearby, Chattahoochee Nature Center uses bats for mosquito control. Central Park, New York City, and Florida Parks saw fewer mosquito complaints, up to 30% of a drop. Huntley Meadow Parks has reported measurable impact post-installation. It promotes a healthier ecosystem and a more friendly park. This is a fourth of the size of the real ones we will be putting up there. It is a standard four-chamber bat house. And it is black in color for the bats. That's about all I have. Any questions?
Questions?
How many bats will go? You said four chambers. Does that mean only four bats will live in there?
Um, about 12 bats, I'd say.
Awesome.
What are these going to be mounted on? Is it going to be mounted on a pole, or how does it get mounted?
So we will be climbing onto a tree about 10 feet high and then just installing them onto the tree.
Okay. Yeah, they do produce, we have those at our farm, and they do produce a lot of waste that comes out of the bottom of them. So make sure they're not hanging over a seat or something.
No.
Cool.
Other questions? Sounds like a great idea to me. I might need one of them at my house. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to item number three. Next, we have "Presentation Request for Funding for New Fire Hydrants." Emergency Service Director Troy Lees. Chief.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Oh, you know what? He left his phone.
Yeah, he might need that.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work. Both my boys are Eagle Scouts, so I know how much work it takes to get to that point. Etowah Water and Sewer is continuing, they are continuing their upgrades for the water mains in the county. And right now, they're working Elliott Road, Sunset Road, and Ruby Lane. So I'm requesting funds to install eight new fire hydrants in the amount of $54,200, and that would be covered by impact fees.
Questions for the chief? Are they working on that now?
Uh, yeah.
I know you're asking for it to be moved forward, so I've just wondered.
Yeah, they've started the work.
They've started the work, okay.
All right.
You know, good with moving that forward until we get those in? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, "Presentation of Emergency FY 2026 Subcontractor Coordinated Transportation Agreement with Heart of Georgia, Altamia Regional Commission for the Georgia Department of Human Services, Senior Service Director Dawn Johnson, and Transit Coordinator Lee Atkins."
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I am going to let Lee Atkins, who is our new transit manager, do most of this presentation. Our county manager helped us get a new position, and thanks to you guys, transit manager. And I'm going to, I've been prepping Lee to come before you and to help take some of the load off of me. So he is here, and I'm going to let him make this presentation to you. And Ms. Davis, this would be something that is going to replace one of our problems that we have been talking about. It is a temporary fix with a 90-day contract, and we're not sure what's going to happen after that. But we did want to ratify it so that we can start drawing money, because finance has not been able to receive any money since December. So I'm well set. If you have any questions after Lee makes this presentation, I'll be here.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. This is just a temporary agreement between Dawson County DHS and the Heart of Georgia, Altamia Regional Commission for DHS. The previous subcontractor for the past years has not fulfilled their duties. And after complaints from our region, DHS found a new subcontractor for reimbursement of the rides. This contract is only for 90 days, beginning in July 1st. And we're not sure what's going to happen after the 90 days. And then we would like for y'all to ratify it afterwards.
Questions for Lee or Dawn? Ms. Davis, have you seen this?
I'm not sure that we have seen this agreement, have we?
No, ma'am. This is a new agreement. We just, we just got it because they have been trying to work on this for a while. We are excited about this agreement because I'm going to let Lee talk about the, we've been in probably 10 years with Deanna, also known as TNT Transportation, with little or no increase in rides as far as the amount that they reimburse us. And this contract is what we have looked at all along to get reimbursement from. I'm going to let Lee talk a little bit about where we have been and where this contract is going to.
So our previous dollar amounts for our core trips, which are the amulatory trips, was $7.75 a trip. They're proposing $18 per trip each way. Hourly would stay the same at 35. And then our wheelchair trips was $11.75, and they're saying 15 each way. These are one-way trips.
So even though this is a temporary 90 days until maybe they put somebody else in place, we are getting some money funded back to us that we should have been funded all along because our biggest complaint was that we were going from, we went from $6.50 over 15 years, from $6.50 to, I believe, $7.50 to $7.75. And they never would increase this. And you know, gas, employees, fringe. And this was something that we were looking at. So we're real tickled. It's only a 90-day. And I think they reached out to this triple, this AAA just agreed, and it is Altamahaw. And the only reason I know that is my dad used to float that river all the time. So they're, you know, they're located in South Georgia, and somebody just had a connection with them. And, but I don't know if we're going to keep them or not. And it may be something if not Legacy Link can help us out with because it's just, it's just they're the middle man, and they check off our rides, and then we receive a reimbursement in finance once a month. And when he says core trips, those are the trips for our seniors. They pay for our seniors to ride the bus.
Now, you said, you said earlier that we hadn't gotten any money since December. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are we going to get reimbursed?
So we have a meeting set up next Wednesday. Myself, Finance, and Stephanie Johnson.
In my office.
From Ms. Davis's office. We are going to go back. Lori Whalen's going to be involved in that. And Natalie, we're going to go back and try to recoup some of that funding because we've had issues with them for, since that time period.
So my, my concern is that they haven't seen it, for one thing, and I want them to. And you'd asked for it to be moved forward, but...
It's not, it's not necessary.
Okay. I want her to see it first.
If Ms. Davis wants to go over it, that is perfectly fine.
I would like for her to.
And then we could, and then we'll have met next week and know a little bit more about it. This contract, I think, went out us, Forsyth, Lumpkin, probably all 12 in our Legacy Link region. And all counties had had problems. We've actually had correspondence with Will Wade on this, as well as Lumpkin County has had correspondence with this, with Steve Goode. So whatever the board wishes to do, we'll follow through with it.
When, just procedurally, it looks like staff looked at it on the 8th. Is that when we received the contract? Seven, eight? Seven, eight?
Just like two.
After the last meeting.
We got it like the day or so before it was due to go before, I guess, to put on the agenda.
It was after.
Is that, is that correct? Is that the question?
I know. Well, I guess I'm just looking at, you know, if we received it a week ago, I think procedurally, we should get it over to legal when we have a, uh, contractual agreement that's coming forward. We shouldn't, we should get it over to them as soon as we can.
And, and also, once we meet with Ms. Davis and her staff, we will, uh, have a better understanding of, she will, their office, of what we've been through the last two years, because we have not had a contract the past two years with the predecessor to this company right here. Well, company, it's a triple-A out of the, that's appointed by the state of Georgia.
That's good.
So that will work. We can wait and come back in, uh, two weeks, and if you have any questions or anything, we can do that. If you have any questions in the meantime, please reach out to either one of us.
Yeah.
And Dawn, will you send me that contract? I'm looking at what's in the work session folder, but I'm not sure if that's the actual contract. If you'll just send it to me by email, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Next up, we have presentation of a resolution authorizing the transmittal of a draft capital improvements element, twenty twenty-four annual update, Community Development Director, Richard Osborne. Richard?
Thank you, Commissioners. The State Department of Community Affairs every year requires that the county, in order to continue its impact fee program, submit a draft capital improvements element update to the Regional Commission in Gainesville for their review. Staff requests that during the August seven voting session, the Board of Commissioners hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution to authorize the transmittal of the draft document, the draft capital improvements element update. That would then go to Gainesville, to the Regional Commission, for their review, uh, regional and state review. This annual update incorporates an annual impact fee financial report for twenty twenty-four that staff received from the Finance Department, and we very much appreciate that, along with an updated community work program for years twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty, and it's based on the updated impact fee. Um, early this year, y'all adopted, um, a bigger picture, um, update to impact fees, and this is just a reflection of twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty, twenty thirty. Um, however, even though it was fairly recently that y'all adopted an update, this year I worked with representatives of various departments just to make sure that, um, everything was still in line, and I got a little bit of updated information. So, um, appreciate, you know, Fire, Public Works, different departments that gave me input. Um, so again, you know, it's something where just kind of discussion now, public, official public hearing, and then August seventh will be y'all hopefully, uh, voting to, uh, authorize this resolution to transmit it. And then the Regional Commission in Gainesville will review, give us comments back. If there are any comments, we'll incorporate that, and then in October, I'll come back again before y'all and request that, um, the county adopt it. Again, just an annual update, so very typical.
Questions for Richard? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation of Keep Dawson County Beautiful, KDCB Relief Grant Application, KDCB Secretary Catherine Massey. Nope, that's not Catherine.
Catherine's actually on a much-needed vacation. Um, good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. So I'm here to request your permission for the Keep Dawson County Beautiful, um, Committee to apply for a matching grant. We would, of course, use our funds if we were, if we were to get the grant, but, um, the project, I'm going to read it to you. The project proposes a large-scale tree giveaway event that would be hosted by us in the fall. The purpose is to distribute approximately a hundred ninety-seven trees that would be in two and a quarter gallon pots and a hundred ninety-seven twenty-five quart bags of mulch and pot, pottying mix. This would go to Dawson County residents, along with the mulch, the watering aids, and printed educational materials for planting and care. And really, the goal behind this is, first of all, to continue growing on the Keep Dawson County Beautiful name, but it's also to empower citizens to plant trees on their own private property, specifically in the residential yards, and to help expand our county's urban canopy and promote ecological and aesthetic benefits across the community. So, I don't want more information?
Questions?
What kind of trees are, is there any information on what kind of trees they are? I think it said native trees, but.
Yeah, it's, the information that I have is approximately a hundred and fifty native trees. I don't have specifics on what kind, but.
Awesome.
Trees native to this area. So, and one thing we're really wanting to do is just promote residential engagement, beautification of neighborhoods, and just engaging our overall county and the citizens in sustainability efforts. So. Do I have?
Other questions?
Any questions?
I see that, uh, there's an ask for it to be moved forward, because it's got a grant deadline of July thirty-first?
That is correct.
Okay. You're good with that? Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation memorandum of understanding with the Development Authority of Dawson County regarding disposition of certain real property off Burke Creek Road. County Manager Joey Leverett and County Attorney Angela Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this matter is a memorandum of understanding between the county and the Development Authority concerning a property, uh, real property on Burke Creek Road. This item has been, uh, in discussion between the county and the Development Authority since late last year. I think you've, the board has had an opportunity to see this document several times. It involves a total of two tracts, a total seventy-seven point six acres, located on Burke Creek Road, and the purpose of the property transaction, property transfer, is the Development Authority intends to develop an industrial park in the future on this property. We heard a presentation, uh, from Jerry Allen and, and the Development Authority earlier this year about the specific plans of what they're working on. Long-term project involves a lot of grant funding if they're successful, but certainly lines up with their mission of increasing jobs and, uh, commercial businesses in our community. A few minor details, I'll, a few major details I'll hit on the, of this agreement. Uh, the Development Authority will be responsible for having this property rezoned. The property is located within the city limits of Dawsonville. There is a timeline connected to this project that has to be substantial. Uh, progress made on the project within ten years, or the property would revert back to the county. Also, as the property is developed, the county will, uh, reserve three acres that will remain our property for a future site. That, that three acres is to be pad-ready for, uh, needs of the county at that time. And that is, those are the major, uh, components of this agreement. Again, this has been vetted, uh, by legal staff, and also this agreement has already been signed and voted on by the Development Authority. So it's here for you tonight, uh, for consideration to, to approve, and will thereafter, the actual, uh, title and deed transfer will take, take place with the two different legal entities. Thank you.
Anything to add, Ms. Davis?
Think that covered it, unless you have any questions.
Questions for county manager or legal? So this, no request to move it forward, right?
It's not necessary to move forward tonight, no sir.
Just making sure. All right. So next up, we have presentation of board appointment, Library Board. Donna Barker replacing Peter Thomas. That term is July twenty twenty-five through June twenty twenty-nine. And you have that information, and so, uh, present that to you to be voted on in a, oh, we need. Oh, okay. All right. What do y'all say? Move forward. All right. Now we move on to eight A. Let me find my paper. Presentation of purchasing policy waiver and budget request concerning repair of Kelly Bridge Road Bridge.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, as you may know, uh, the Georgia Department of Transportation, every two years will inspect, uh, local bridges, Dawson County bridges. They've done that inspection, and they've alerted me to an issue out on the Kelly Bridge Road over the Edewall River. There is a joint failure, and it's rather significant in the fact that there is some bouncing metal out there, and, you know, it needs to be addressed. Uh, what I'm asking for you today is, uh, allow us to, uh, waive the required purchasing policy of sealed bids and, uh, award it to the low bid. Waiting on second quote now, but, uh, we'll be able to award it to the low bid once we get that second bid in. So that's the request.
Questions for Robert?
Is there a ballpark on?
Yeah, it's.
I know, I don't want to, I mean.
I don't want to give away the bids, obviously, because we're still waiting on the second.
Still waiting on the second.
It, it's less than a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Something they can do.
You said bridge.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. I agree. Yes. Alarming, alarming.
One section, one portion.
Will this one fix repair the entire issue?
Uh, we're not completely sure, uh, and, and it's a long story, but, uh, that's the only issue the DOT has alerted us to on that particular bridge.
Is the bridge going to remain open?
Correct. It will. We'll have to do a lane closure. Uh, the traditional way, I'm glad you asked that question. The traditional way of doing this kind of repair would require, I think, probably about a week closure, um, and jackhammers and concrete repairs. Um, but, uh, we've got a way that can be done. We would just close the lane and do it in a matter of a couple of days without impacting traffic.
Okay. Will this be done, I mean, obviously we'll bid it out, but like, will you be there monitoring the situation? And, okay. And can you, uh, let us know, Joey, Robert, whatever, as soon as you have the other bids?
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Robert? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Manager report, Joey.
Several items tonight. Uh, first, the flash report for the month of June is in your packet. Second item, uh, I was remiss at our last meeting. I failed to make an announcement I should have made. Uh, we'd like to congratulate our new financial chief officer, Chief Financial Officer Natalie Johnson. We have a long-term staff member. Uh, Natalie has been with the county for many years and was recently promoted to our CFO with Mr. Nykerk's retirement, and I failed to mention that two weeks ago, but congratulations, Natalie. Uh, likewise, we'd also like to congratulate our Human Resource Director, Kristy Finley, who recently, uh, was presented the, presented at the Georgia Local Government Personnel Association Conference with her Level Two certification as an advanced certified human resource manager. To achieve this certification, Kristy completed forty-eight hours of instruction in classes and the completion, completion of a multi-rater assessment instrument that collects ratings on behavior competencies for multiple observers. Just wanted to, uh, note this, uh, achievement for her was not required. It's something she did on her own, uh, and this is a, a good recognition, and I would just appreciate her, uh, getting that advanced training. Also, wanted to know one more time, I'm sure we've had some public notices about it, but the, the new BOC meeting times will, will begin at your next meetings on August the seventh. Uh, work sessions will begin at five o'clock. We've had it at four o'clock for many years, with the voting sessions to follow, but no earlier than six PM. So five o'clock will be the work sessions, and if we have to take a little break, the voting session will not start till, no, no earlier than six PM. Our meetings, um, live streaming service is also changing. On August seventh, we will begin live streaming to both Facebook and YouTube at the same time, and all meetings will be permanently available to view on YouTube. This is due to a change that Facebook has made, not just for Dawson County, but nationally. I guess Facebook is getting too full. They can only store so much data. Um, recorded videos after thirty days come off of Facebook. They do not on YouTube. So we've had to switch that provider. We certainly wanted that, um, transparency and for citizens to be able to go back and look at our meetings, and if we just had Facebook, they would be not there after thirty days. We want everyone to be able to view the meetings just like in the past. So a little change there. Um, you may have somebody a few months from now saying, why'd you take all the meetings down? We, we didn't take them down. Face, Facebook took it, took them down, but they're on YouTube. Lastly, I'm very excited to make this announcement. We've had many discussions in these chambers over the past year and a half about staffing for our fire and EMS, and it's been a challenge. I'm, what I'm so excited about is I'm, I'm able to come for you tonight and say we are one hundred percent fully staffed in all budgeted positions in fire EMS. That's, that, I'll clap for that. I'll clap for that. But took, took a lot of effort. Uh, won't, you know, a lot of things were done by this board that we appreciate. Likewise, staff went to extra efforts in recruiting, and it's just, uh, somewhat, I sleep better at night. I sleep better at night, and I know everyone else here does, too. We want to maintain that, and we're committed to that, but all, all our paramedic positions are filled. You know, I, I spoke to y'all last year that we were, we were almost at a critical level, you know? Uh, but we've been working hard to get these positions filled, and we've heard from the public. It wasn't that we didn't want to. It's just, it's just finding the right people, uh, getting a lot of positive feedback. We did have a fire, uh, recruit class last year. That's been successful. Uh, but one of those, uh, recruits is still with us. So, again, I just wanted to make that announcement, and I, I feel like we really got over a hurdle, and we got to keep our position where we're at, but, uh, it's good to finally accomplish that, and we're excited and pleased to announce that. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Questions of the county manager?
Sir?
County Attorney report, Ms. Davis.
I do not have a public report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think we will have an executive session in reference to personnel, but, um, we'll talk about that after the work voting session. All right. So that takes us to the end of our work session. We'll take about a ten-minute break, and then we'll be back for the voting session. Thank you for your attendance.